Just a couple, before I call a meeting to order, just a couple guidelines. We like to make sure that if you're, you'd like to speak, the person running the meeting will unmute you. And please identify yourself by name and address. And I'm going to turn my phone off if you'll bear with me for a moment. Because it's, it's going to ring during the meeting if I don't. Welcome, everybody. So I'm going to call the meeting to order. And as far as who we have seated, let's see, we have Larry Preston, Rich Napolitano, Tom Courier, myself, Alex, and that constitutes our quorum. That said, Paula, any changes to the agenda suggested?
No, there aren't.
Okay. The minutes of November 23rd, 2020. Any corrections or changes? They look fine to me.
It's good to me.
I'll make a motion that we accept them as presented. Oh, man, I think that was Larry. You got in there first. Any discussion? All those in favor, the members, raise your hand, it's the easiest way to poll. Okay, any abstentions? No names, so that's unanimous. Thanks. Audience of citizens, is there anything anyone would like to bring up to us that is not already on the agenda? From, from the... No? Okay. Make note that Bob Powell has started, has connected to the meeting.
Thank you.
Hi, Bob.
Good evening.
Hi, Bob.
We voted on the minutes from the last meeting, but that's, that's the only point. We're an audience of citizens in the agenda. No one finished business, Paula?
No, we have none.
Okay, so I'm going to move into item seven under new business. This is M&amp;J Bus Line Site Plan Application to Locate a School Bus Service Facility at 9 Route 66 East, Assessor's Map 9, Lot 7, in the CM2 Zone. That said, how will we unfold this? Will we have the applicant speak first?
You certainly can, they're here.
Okay, and could you, again, identify yourself for the record if you'd like to speak? And you'll be recognized.
I'm Ted Harris, representing the applicant tonight on lawyer practice in Niantic, Connecticut.
Thank you, Mr. Harris. Is there anyone else here representing also, or you just sold?
No, with, with me is, is Mike Beebe, the principal of M&amp;J Bus, as well as Robert Fanner, who redesigned the layout of the parking lot. And he'll be speaking as well on that issue.
Okay, thank you. Why don't you go ahead, Mr. Harris.
Okay. So this is an application for a change of use with respect to this site. That application is based on two sections of the regulations. One of them is Section 1.31.2. And that, that allows vehicular sales and service in this CM2 Zone indirectly by reference from the CM2 Zone Regulation 32.2, which kicks it back to Section 31.26, or in this case, vehicular sales and service. So that is the regulatory framework on which our application is being presented tonight. The applicant is M&amp;J Bus. It's a family business that literally started in 1995. It's operated by Michael and Karen Beebe, husband and wife, and their two children. And it has been growing ever since starting in 1995. They service school bus contracts throughout the state of Connecticut and had several right in the general area of this, this facility, which is one of the basic reasons why you wanted, in fact, jumped at the chance of buying this facility, because it'll make operations much more efficient for him and be, and be, provide better service to the surrounding towns as well.
Okay.
The building actually, it couldn't have been designed better for this particular use. It's not only suitable, it's more than suitable for the use. Based on its prior use, it has a variety of equipment within the building, which would typically be used in bus maintenance. Not only that, it has physical facilities within the building that are also important and useful in terms of the bus maintenance. The only thing that really has to be changed in order to use this site efficiently for the proposed purpose is to redesign the layout of the parking lot, not enlarge it, not make it smaller, but just rearrange the layout because of the nature of the vehicles to be parked there. So the proposed use is a maintenance facility that will serve all the surrounding communities in which M&amp;J Bus has a contract. In addition, they will have buses on site and vans on site, which will be available in, to use and to dispatch in case there's a breakdown, in case there's inadequate buses at a particular location. But generally, the main purpose of this facility is maintenance. With respect to the vans, because of the unique nature of the vans, typically special needs children, the vans will be more frequently dispatched from this site because of the uneven hours of the van's usage and the inability to keep enough vans in any one particular location. So typically, the vans would be dispatched from this site. If you look at the interior of the building, one of the main features that strikes you immediately is the fact that it has three large bays, which is suitable for bus repair, and, and one smaller one, which is suitable for the van. So it has a perfect physical setup within the building for the proposed use. There's also ample parking, as you will see, on the parking area for the buses, the support facilities, and the vans. And you'll see that we've shown approximately 27 spaces for buses, although we don't expect really to have that many on site. But it's possible, depending on maintenance levels. We, we expect to have about 20 vans. And the balance of the parking will be for support staff, bus drivers, and the like. And again, you'll see that specific design when Bob reviews it with you. The wetland officer has also reviewed this application. In fact, he was on site with our engineer on Saturday. And he has determined that we do not need a new permit for this activity because we have limited the activity to the perimeter of the original site plan, which was approved in conjunction with the addition to the building some, I don't know, 15 or 20 years ago. So there is no need for a new wetland permit.
And there's also no need for administrative approval?
Correct, correct. There's another factor I'd like you to consider as well, to emphasize the fact that this is intended to be a maintenance facility. Normally, when Mr. Beebe gets a town contract, he tries to buy a facility or a location nearby. He likes to own the facility because that way he has full control over it as opposed to a lease or something that is temporary. In this instance, there is no town contract that's going to be supported by this facility. Rather, this facility is going to support the existing contracts in the surrounding areas and make it more efficient. He'll be able to get a vehicle repaired quick, quicker, and get it back in service. In fact, in Columbia, it'd be ideal, because he does have the Columbia contract, and it'll be super service with respect to the Columbia needs in terms of repairs and the like. In conjunction with this activity, there'll be full two, two full-time mechanics on site as well as administrative staff, administrative person, I should add, that administration person will, administrative person, whatever, will be doing dispatching to some extent and also keeping the records of vehicle repairs, which are needed to be maintained for DOT if for no other reason. Although this commission, I'm sure, knows the site history better than I do. Just to quickly review it, as I mentioned earlier, it was originally a dealer for automobiles, including the full planipie of repairs, bodywork, painting, and the like. Approximately 20-plus years ago, it became a different facility in conjunction with the addition, and it was creating trucks out of truck bodies and a frame and an engine, and making different truck-type vehicles for sale. That activity terminated a month or two ago, and the building came on the market. And Mr. Beebe, of course, immediately saw it as an opportunity to provide better service to the locations in this general area, his locations in this general area. So he jumped on it, and if, or this commission to approve this application, we hope to close and purchase the property within 30 days. We've already done a lot of the base work with respect to this activity. So basically, as, as the building sits now, we're going to walk into the building and employ, employ a lot of the fixtures in the building, which are, have been designed for this particular type of maintenance, which is very similar to the original construct, construction of these trucks. There's a bunch of personal property that's also useful in our activity. So it's, it's really almost a turnkey operation. The only thing, as I mentioned earlier, that needs to be done is, is to rearrange the parking area so that it can support the use that we propose. And Mr. Fanner will go over that with you shortly. I've known Mr. Beebe for quite a few years, and one thing I know about him, he, he likes to own his own facilities. He, he will do, and for a lot of reasons, he can provide better service. He knows that he has the same facility from year to year, and, and he dictates what happens within the facility, not a tenant, a landlord, or something else. This facility is important because it gives him the ability to control the maintenance in, in the area around Columbia, where he has several bus contracts. It'll allow him to give better service to these contracts, including Columbia. And he has control over the whole facility.
Thank you.
Yeah, one more comment, just, just to, for a point of information, I guess. School buses can be repaired by employees of a bus company. You do not need a motor vehicle license to do this. The statute indicates that a quote qualified mechanic may repair buses. But there's a specific statutory schedule for the maintenance of buses. And not only that, there is a routine inspection by DOT of all buses. So while this is allowed, there is also state supervision over this process of maintaining the buses. And with that, I'll turn it over to Bob Fanner if he wants to review the parking.
Yes, Bob Fanner, I'm from J. Robert Fanner and Associates. We're located at 37 Grand Street in Niantic. Can we do sheen, the screen shares on here to bring up the plan, or?
Yes, you can. I have the site plan ready, if you don't have it, so.
I do have it ready.
All members received a PDF packet with, with the site plan and with the aerial photo with the overlay. That, that document, perfect.
Can everyone, can everyone see that share now?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay. So this is basically an overlay of the existing site plan that was done back when they converted from the dealership to the truck body repair place. And what we did is did a layout over the top of what was there to see if we could fit in the amount of parking that we need for the facility. We have a few different parking areas. You come in the entrance down at the bottom of the plan here. We put the van parking in this area and here. So this, this area in here, when you see the green line, is the van parking area. We've got spots located along the road. Then we've got a few bus parking spaces in this area, where we can double stack the buses, one behind the other, which works in this kind of condition, because, again, it's not like a parking lot where you've got multiple people. It's all controlled by us, so the stacked parking works in that situation. Then we have another parking area behind the building, back in this area here. This would be the employee parking, just for regular vehicles. And then we took a small corner of it and designated some bus parking. We've got back-to-back car parking places, and two of those put together actually end up doubling or being one bus spot. So it gives us a little flexibility if we need a little overflow for buses there. And also, if we have more cars, they could become car parking places. Then we have a third parking area located on the side street, which is all bus parking located in this area here. And the only additional parking that we have is handicap parking for people that do need to access the building. There are two handicap spots located on the side of the building, right next to the awning in the entrance there. So we do have two handicap spots there to handle that. All of the layout of the parking here falls within the approved limits of clearing from the previous site plan. We pulled everything back a little bit. They kind of, over the years, the previous owner kind of expanded somewhat. But we've kept everything inside of their approved area from the previous site plan without deviating outside of that area. So we're not creating any more disturbance. There's a paved portion around the building, but the majority of the parking is actually a gravel parking area. So there's not really any work to be done, so to speak, to create these parking areas. Again, they're all, it's all gravel, it's all cleared now, there's nothing there. So it's just kind of a matter of reimagining where everything's going to go. And once the buses and everything start parking in there, we'll create those, those areas. There's, there's no park, there's a few parking places located on the paving in the front. Those parking places could be striped there to kind of establish that area. But again, the majority of the parking is located on the paving and all within the areas of the previous approval. I will note, the plan that we have, I have up there now is the site plan. And then the second sheet that was submitted was simply an overlay with an image from Google Earth as the background. But it's the same layout each one, just to kind of show you how it looked with the previous owner versus where we are now.
Right.
And that's all I have. If anybody has any questions, I would be glad to address anything they might have.
Bob, can you pop up the aerial one? Looks like you have it as a tab right there.
Yeah, I gotta stop the share to switch, I think, so I'll just do a reshare. It wouldn't let me flick. There we go. So this is the Google Earth image in the background.
Yes.
So you can kind of see in some of the areas, you know, they had some parking over in this area before. They had some parking back here that we're not, again, we're not utilizing those areas. So those were outside of their approved area. And you can see they even expanded a little bit on the side street there. Again, they put back outside of the approved limit, so to speak. So we've kept everything inside there, so we can maintain the original approval.
So while we have this up, one of the things that I wanted to point out is if you'll look on the, the backside of the property, it's actually about 240 feet from the, the proposed parking, extend of the proposed parking area, all the way back to the property line. It's about 240 feet that we're in, in a, we're in a flood zone, flood zone A. This whole part of our town is flood zone A. We have a wetland, as you can see, a pond on the left, and it's up against, between the 10-mile river and the Willimantic River. So that's, which is why we're concerned with wetlands and why John Valenti, the wetlands agent, was involved to a certain extent in terms of review. But if you'll notice that just behind the, the upper portion of the image beyond the parking areas, the previous owners, and I don't know if that was Mr. Rose or the other people that came in, he leased it for a year or two to someone else for the same job, same business. But there's a lot of slippage of where things were stored. And it's, that's something that Attorney Harris and I've talked about and how one of the things that we need to be very careful with, because it is wetlands, is that any storage of anything not be beyond the approved parking area.
And we certainly have no objection to that.
There's, if you do need to expand the parking, and again, Attorney Harris and I talked about this, if the parking does need to expand for a reason, it would take a wetlands application, and, and the commission, the wetlands commission would take a look at, at how the parking could expand. I don't know that, depending on how much of an expansion, whether or not you would need to come back to PCC afterwards or, or, or not. But, so there is, expansion is possible, but it would have to go through Edelwein Wetlands Commission, expansion of the paving.
Okay.
One more thing. One of the things that the commission, I think it was in 1997, asked for, was having, there were some street trees between Route 66 East and the property line, just enough street trees to soften the fact that it's equipment. At that time, it was trucks, mostly highway department trucks parked in the back, and same along Commerce Drive. And I think it would be good for those to remain, because we'd be able to have a little bit of screening there, not so much, and there certainly isn't now, and I'm not suggesting there'd be enough screening, that there was so much screening that there'd be a problem with vandalism or anything like that. But just to, to let the driver's eye rest on a, on a tree instead of an orange parking lot or a yellow parking lot with, with buses there.
Okay. Should we take down that slide?
Yes.
Or that, that PDF?
Yes, you can stop sharing now, thank you.
Thank you.
I have talked to the wetlands agent, although not today. Last time I talked to him was on Thursday. And he, he did want to follow up on stormwater system that he thought was not functioning. And I've not heard back from him that he was satisfied with it. I don't think it's an issue, but I think it's something that can be taken just as an item in the, any sort of a motion that the commission might want to make. Just that he needs to, to confirm that it's functioning to his satisfaction.
Okay. Question, Paula, do we have any engineering drawings done other than the two that were presented tonight?
No. We have old ones in the file from the 60s and the, and the late 90s.
So there's no existing conditions drawing?
It hasn't changed from what the 1997 layout.
So the, but my question is, is there no existing site plan submitted as part of this application?
The site plan that you saw tonight is what was submitted, because there's been no change to the existing site plan.
So it indicates what is paved and what is not paved?
Yes.
Okay. So you're talking about some drain, you're talking about some drainage issues right now?
I don't think there are drainage issues. We just, I've not, for, for our files, we've not seen the, we've not got a confirmation from town staff that it's been addressed.
Don't, don't we require as part of the application, an existing site plan, A2 survey, whatever?
This is an A2 survey, nothing has changed.
And what's the date of that survey?
97.
Okay. So nothing has changed?
Nothing has changed. The building is exactly the same, the signage is the same, the area of pavement.
And the site, and the site, and the site conditions are the same? They have not changed? That's been verified?
Yes.
By whom?
John Valenti and myself.
Okay. How many, how many employee parking lot, parking spaces are there on the plan?
39.
And how many handicap spaces are provided?
Two, because there are only two, it's not four, there's no customers that are coming there. And that, that would have to be.
That, that is not the point. There could be handicap employees. The state statute states that you have to provide certain amount of handicap spaces for each. All right.
Yes.
So we're meeting, we're meeting that, we're meeting that requirement?
The building inspector will make sure that that is met.
But that's part of the site plan approval process, so how do we deal with that?
Mr. Fanner, do you have an answer to that? You're the engineer in terms of parking requirements? I don't have.
We did, we did provide two handicap spots, which are more than what is required for the number of parking places that we have. Typically, a ratio of parking places of regular car parking places to handicap spots. Less than 100 is usually only requires one. So we have two in this case.
Okay, good. Is there, Mr. Fanner, is there a separate requirement for employee parking that'd be categorized separately? I'm not familiar with the regulations.
No, no, because all the parking places, you know, the, the parking calculation to come up with the, the final number is used, whether it's employees or customers or whatever you want to say.
Yeah.
It's based on the number of spots.
Yeah, usually, it's about 5% of the total parking spaces.
So that's a different number, Bob, what you're saying, than what Mr. Fanner said?
No, if they have 30, if, if they have 37 spaces, then that would be two handicap spaces.
Okay, so.
It's about 5%, of the total.
That's meeting the 5%, but not the 100 to 1, you know, Mr. Fanner?
Right, exactly.
Mention, okay.
They're erring on the, on the safe side.
Okay. Any questions from the commission on this?
Can I make one comment? Bob, you did talk with the wetlands agent about the drainage system, did you not?
Yes, I actually met with him on the site, and we did review the drainage out there. There was, at one time, some problem with the drainage system, but that had been actually cleaned out, pumped out, and functioning properly again. So there was no issues with the drainage. Again, there was, there was a catch basin in the back that had silted in, and they had that cleaned out and that alleviated problem. So I, I know when I spoke with him on the site, because we had talked about if we had to do some new drainage work, because the system was failing, that would require a permit and, from him. But after reviewing the site, and he also at least spoke to the owner, as well as our buyer, and they both discussed it in length, he was satisfied that they were repaired and functioning properly to meet his, his requirements for drainage for the site.
Okay. Any questions from the commission, from the applicant, of the applicant?
I have a question. The area that's beyond the parking that was not to be built on or stored, I should say, has there been any move to clean that up? Is there trailers or is it debris, all that stuff?
I can answer that one, Alex. The, the existing owner, current owner, has cleaned it up, that it's spotless there. I didn't see a scrap of paper. Of course, there was a little snow on the ground, but I didn't see a scrap of paper anywhere, let alone an, an engine or a shed or anything. It's, the, the aerial is the way it was probably a year or two ago. Or at least a year ago.
Yeah, I was out there, and I have to say, I was, I was very surprised how clean it was, considering how much stuff was there. There literally is nothing back there.
Yeah. There's nothing anywhere on the property that I saw.
Any, any other questions or comments from the commission?
I'm actually happy to see it's getting used so quick and not sitting empty.
I am too. I want to say to Mr. Beebe, thank you for bringing your business to town. We appreciate that. Just a couple of questions. I, I have a minor concern, and I don't know that we even have the authority to raise it during a site plan review. And I'm going to be very candid about that, so don't take this as a formal observation, but maybe a casual one. I'm hoping where possible, we can avoid a sea of big yellow buses right on the street, especially on Commerce Drive. And it's pure aesthetics, but that's part of what we do as a zoning commission. But as part of a site plan review, there's probably not a lot of authority to exercise any control. And I don't even think we, we're attempting to exercise that control, because I see that law. because I see that large area of bus parking, and I think of those big bus depots I drive by on Route 95 in North Haven, and it makes me cringe a little bit, and I, a little bit concerned about that, I don't get the impression it's going to be full of buses, because it's not a depot, it's just a repair facility, so I'm assuming the buses will be coming here as needed and in and off the property, and they're not going to be considered housed there. But I do have a, and so that's more of an observation, I'm not even asking for a reaction to that from the applicants. But separate from that, the property purchase, has it triggered the Connecticut Transfer Act? Because it was once used as an auto body, I'm sure auto body was, a repair was done at the site when it was an auto dealership?
I can answer that, the law has changed a little bit, it was unclear, but it gets a little detailed, there was a Form 1 filed in a transaction between the car dealer and the truck assembly facility. The law also changed in the interim where just painting, auto painting or vehicle painting is no longer a factor that determines whether or not it's an establishment. So the bottom, we're still looking at that issue, but the bottom line, we believe it is not an establishment at this point in time, because the auto body use terminated, and the law changed, and just auto painting is not a use that generates, that dictates it to be an establishment.
Let me just illuminate the rest of the members, if, in case you're not familiar, under Connecticut's statutes, when you transfer a property that was one of three critical uses in its history, it may trigger the need to go through a very involved environmental investigation and certification process, one of those being auto body, use as an auto body shop. So that Form 1, I believe, I'm not that expert in that area, that's probably, at a different point in time, the requirements may have been different, and they may change in the future, but I was just kind of curious, because it segued into my next question, what level of environmental investigation has the buyer done as part of the potential purchase of the property? Phase 1, phase 2?
There was a phase 1 and phase 2 completed. There was, there was a significant environmental testing done, probably 20 years ago now. There still were monitoring wells available, so they, some of them were still available, they checked those wells. Anyway, bottom line, the report was about as clean as I could ever see an environmental report. The only question that was left up in the air was whether or not it was an establishment, and the more I've looked at it, the less I believe it is.
And the monitoring wells, do they cover the bulk of the area around the building? Or do they go throughout the property?
They were throughout the property, the ones that were remaining that they could find. To be honest with you, I'm not sure exactly where they were, I didn't, I read the report, but I didn't look at the mapping.
Okay. Okay, so you're comfortable environmentally, Mr. Beebe is comfortable environmentally proceeding with the purchase?
Right.
Yeah, I was posing that as a question.
I think he is, at this point in time.
Yeah.
Because I've talked with him about it, we're still, I'm still going to review this issue once more before we close.
If there's any issues at surface, I would beg you to bring that to the immediate attention of our town planner. We like to know what's going on where, and it's only during a transfer of property and a review like this that we get a good snapshot from a town perspective into those issues if they exist. So we would love to know what's going on, please keep her in the loop on that.
Question, question on that, if in fact, we do approve this site plan, should it be a condition of approval that the environmental assessment is done? Or that it's a clean environmental assessment?
I don't, I don't think we have that in our regulations to mandate that, and that's really a whole separate reign of authority that's many levels above us in some respects. I don't think we need to address that formally, I just wanted to get a good feel for the property personally.
Well, I can tell you, I've read a lot of environmental reports, and this one is about as clean as I've seen, honestly, especially for a facility of this nature. That's a different issue from whether or not it may be an establishment, but even if it's an establishment, based on this report, there is.
Mr. Harris, just to interject, just, I don't think that probably many members of the commission understand what you mean by an establishment. That's one, if it's one of the three categories that are considered that trigger this environmental, the Transfer Act, that's considered an establishment.
Correct.
So, you know, the other verbiage we could use, if it's one of the three categories of properties that would trigger a very intensive process for the, for the transfer of the property. So establishment is, that's what that term means.
But there's different levels as well in terms of the process, there's a 1, 2, and a 3. And in this case, at worst, assuming you, we had to file Form 1, that would be it. And that Form 1, all, all it has to be supported with is a Phase 1 and a Phase 2 environmental study, which has been accomplished, and we just got the results in the last two weeks.
Okay, thank you, that's the extent of my questions about that. Any other questions from the commission?
Yep.
Good. This isn't a public hearing, so we won't be opening this up to any questions potentially from the public. So that being said, Paula, what's your recommendation? I'm very comfortable with this application, I think it's very well done, and I don't, there's no, no lingering questions from my perspective.
I concur, my only lingering, and it's only because I don't have it from the wetlands agent's mouth, is just the fact that we, I need to see that the stormwater system has been taken care of, which you can handle that as part of your motion. It's not going to hold anything up.
Well, is there a reason to put it in our motion if they have their own regulatory authority? I mean, to put, to put it in our motion if there's a separate area of oversight, is that necessary? I would.
I'm thinking. Perhaps not, perhaps, I think it's okay to not, yeah.
Yeah, I don't, I just don't see, we need to do that, we have a separate system for that. Paula did send me a sample motion, I don't know if that it went out to everyone else. I'm going to read it, but this is not making the motion, I want to, at this point, I would suggest that we consider taking action to approve the, the application, and I'm going to read this out loud for everybody, and if you, there's no objection, then that will be the emotion, the motion, motion to approve the application of M&amp;J Bus, and I'm sorry, I don't mean to go past this. Is everyone comfortable moving forward to a motion to approve?
Yes. I read it already, can I approve it too?
Okay, make a motion to approve the application of M&amp;J Bus Incorporated for a school bus service facility, per the application submitted, the conceptual parking lot layout dated 11/21/2020, and statements made by the applicant and the applicant's agent with the following conditions. Outdoor parking is only permitted per the conceptual parking layout. Any outdoor storage shall meet Section 66.3, and is limited to the area defined by the approved conceptual parking layout. The site's stormwater system shall be in working order and confirmed by Columbia's wetland agent, and the existing screening provided by the street trees shall be maintained with trees replaced as needed. So that motion was made with that verbiage in it, Paula suggested, let's just leave it at that. So I would make them motion as presented. That was Rich. Is there any discussion amongst members of the commission?
Yes, I have a couple of comments. One, I, I think I have an issue with the word conceptual site plan, because it doesn't mean proposed site plan. Conceptual will allow some flexibility in the future. The site plan, I believe our requirements require a site plan that has at least some dimensions on it that show proposed sizes of parking spaces, proposed aisles of vehicular, vehicular transportation, et cetera. The word conceptual really bothers me in this application. I think a proposed site plan would hold their feet to the fire with what is going to be proposed and what will be actually done on the site. Against conceptual, in my mind, and I'm not sure legally, allows them a lot more flexibility than I think we want to give them.
The, what was submitted is to scale, so it can be measured off very easily, and the name, the name printed on the plan is called conceptual parking layout. So I'm quoting what was on what they submitted.
Right, and that, and that, Paul, is what I have a problem with, if it's a proposed layout, that's different than a conceptual layout. Also, we do not scale drawings, we have dimensions on drawings, because as you know, when we transpose those to an electronic media or whatever, you can't scale a drawing, you do not scale drawings, you need dimensions on drawings.
I have a solution to that, because I think your comments vary on point, Bob. So that we could change the verbiage in each reference to the layout. For example, I'm going to change, I'm going to withdraw the motion if you don't mind, because we're, I think revising the verbiage would be helpful. The second, person who's seconded, Rich, you're okay with that?
Yeah, yeah, I'm okay with that.
So what if we came up with, I'm going to read the first line of a changed motion, motion to approve the application of M&amp;J Buss Inc. for a school bus service facility, per the application submitted. The proposed layout labeled, quote, conceptual parking layout, unquote. So conceptual will simply be a label for a document, not that it is in fact conceptual if we use that terminology. Bob, does that make you more comfortable?
I think we're, I think we're trying to get around the fact that it says conceptual on the plan. Maybe the plan is resubmitted and it says proposed site plan.
We would call it a proposed layout, and we would just say the title of it was conceptual.
Wait a minute, Rick, we can't call it anything, the engineer submitting the plan has to call it something. He has called it conceptual at this point, if he changes it to propose, then we can vote on it. We can't change the title of someone else's drawing, Rick.
I didn't suggest that we change the title, that we just are referring to it as a proposed plan, and then, and say that they use the title conceptual, but we're treating it as a proposed plan. I think that that addresses what your concern is.
Please don't misunderstand me, I'm fully in agreement with this proposal. I'm just worried about the legal ramifications of referring to a conceptual plan.
Okay. One of the things to consider is, this is a different use, there aren't going to be customers pulling in, looking for a place to park. It's going to be their own buses, the people that drive their buses, the mechanics most likely are going to be driving to wherever the bus is currently, driving it here and parking it.
Paul, let's not go down that path.
Okay, all right.
Let's go down the path, saying that I respect Bob's concern about the word conceptual, and maybe we can simply get the applicant to agree to resubmit this with conceptual change to proposed, and approve it subject to that change being submitted. Would that be something that makes you comfortable, Bob? Because your concerns, I think, are valid. You know, we might as well erase that as an issue, I can't imagine that's going to be an issue for the applicant. Who would I ask, address that question to, Mr. Harris?
I'm not going to direct it to Bob, but I don't think we have any issue with that at all.
You know.
I can certainly change the title to be a proposed site plan or just site plan.
Okay.
Okay, I would feel, that's great, I would really feel much better about that. And I think we can, we can approve it on that condition. We can approve it on that.
Let me take my changes out of the draft that I have. Paula, can you help me, Wordsmith here, because I'd like to get this approved tonight? I'm looking at it in a Word document, I can make some changes so I can actually read it as we want it. How about if we just say the?
I think we need to refer to what was being submitted, which is conceptual.
Can't you just amend the proposal and add a line at the bottom?
Yes, that's what I was thinking of doing.
Yeah, that's, I'm thinking the same.
Where you've got the stormwater, take that section out and put in that the applicant will submit the parking layout as a site plan, or Bob can come up with a language that he's comfortable with on that.
Yeah, Bob, help us out here, because I'd like to get this done for them tonight.
We can just, we'll call it a site plan, instead of being conceptual parking layout, we'll call it a site plan layout for M&amp;J Bus.
Yep, that would be, that would be fine.
So the title, the title will, will read, M&amp;J Bus Inc., Site Plan Parking Layout. Does that work?
Yeah, then you just make amendment to the original proposal, to what he exactly said, and then those go to vote. Somebody needs to make amendment, propose.
Yeah.
And we accept it as that, and then it goes.
I, I'm going to make the changes and then read it out loud.
I think you're supposed to amend the proposal, and then they both get voted on as amended.
I think, I think Rick withdrew his proposal.
I withdrew my proposal.
No, it's all new.
So I'm starting, start from scratch.
Let me read out loud how this would read, because I think that'll be easier for everybody to consider. Motion to approve the application of M&amp;J Bus Incorporated for a school bus service facility, per the application submitted. The M&amp;J's site plan layout dated 11/21, and statements made by the applicant and the applicant's agent with the following conditions. Outdoor parking is per the M&amp;J site plan layout, any outdoor storage shall meet Section 66.3, and is limited to the areas defined by the approved M&amp;J site plan layout, confirmed by Columbia's wetland agent, and the existing screening provided by the street trees shall be maintained with trees replaced as needed. And simply calling it a site plan layout, regardless of what they put as a label on it, I think addresses your concerns, Bob, correct?
Yes, it does.
Okay, so that was a motion just made. I need a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, please raise your hand, members. This works like a charm, the raising the hand, that's unanimous, yes. Alex, were you in favor of this?
Yes, I was.
Okay, thank you, so that's unanimous, thank you, thank you for the application. Thank you, Mr. Beebe, for bringing your business to town, and I think you did a wonderful job presenting, Mr. Harris and Mr. Fanner.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Paula, I have this, I did this as a change Word document, I'll email it to you after the meeting.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next up, item 7.2, election of officers. Is anyone else interested in being chair? Because we should keep it open, I mean, I would love to continue.
I'm nominating Bob. No joking.
No way, no way.
Who wants to do what, I don't, I don't want you to feel, I mean, I love doing this, I love working with all of you, but if anyone else has an interest, I don't, nothing should be a foregone conclusion. You know, it's.
Rick massive.
Well, thank you, it's an easy job to do, we, we've had excellent support, Paula, thank you for all the support from you.
Don't forget flow.
I, yeah, I was going to get there. Flow, you're the other vital, you know, to go through minute after minute after minute and not have to modify them, thank you. I love you for that. Then I would make a motion that we renominate the current slate as it exists. That would be Vera as Vice Chair, myself as Chair. Vice Chair, myself as Chair, and Bob, you're the Secretary formally.
Yep.
Okay. Do I have a second to that?
I'll second.
Any discussion? No discussion?
Nope, well done.
Okay, all those in favor? That's unanimous vote, thank you, everybody. That said, next up, regulation revisions, discussion of possible revisions to section 24, 21.4 of the Lake, Columbia Lake Watershed Protection. Dan, you're here, please unmute yourself, we would want you to participate.
Hello.
Welcome, Dan, how are you, Dan O'Neil, for the record, representing Lake Management Committee. So where are we on this, Paula, bring me up to speed.
Lake Management met a few weeks ago and Dan, I know, has a couple of things he can report on that. What I sent out to you in the packet was the same document that I developed two years ago. However, it's, it includes the changes that Henry Beck had suggested. So that his changes are in red, my comments are in blue. And Henry Beck was representing LMAC, not doing it as, as the Town Attorney. So just a few changes that, that he suggested, most of which I agree with, a couple I don't. One of which, Dan and I talked about it and he concurred. But I don't know how far you want to get into this tonight.
Why don't you present everything you have? We'll keep it reasonable, you know.
Okay.
See what we need.
I can pull it up on the screen if that would help, I can share.
It would help.
Okay.
So we know what you're referencing each step of the way. And then, and members, you can bring up the same document if you have a computer in front of you.
I printed it. I'm here.
I was having some problems downloading them, so.
Okay, yeah, so bring it up on the screen, Paula, that's perfect.
I'm trying. Alright. Shouldn't have taken this long. Alright.
There we go.
So this is the same document and it's, we talked about it last time in terms of what is changing. And most of it, there's a few policy changes, but most of it is just reorganizing it. And my goal was to make it a little bit more user friendly, although Dan found a section that may not be so user friendly. The, one of the changes that Henry Beck inserted was in the applicability, which is one of the things, our current regs don't make it really clear, but it's the first section of this is, I think, lays it out pretty well, and Dan concurred. Is within the Columbia Lake Watershed Protection area, these regulations shall apply to all new structures, additions to existing structures, and expansion of non-permeable ground surfaces. And then we go on to say, and it's because we had this in the previous regulations, or any activity that requires a planning and zoning, zoning board of appeals inland. And Henry added in a wetlands or zoning compliance certificate. And then these requirements shall be in addition to the zoning requirements of the underlying residential agriculture district. The inland wetlands, you don't want the inland wetlands to be reviewing, to be applicable because they review everything that might be somebody just repairing a deck or putting up a, a wall, which wetlands will take care of whether or not that's something that they need to address. And it really shouldn't be triggering the phosphorus runoff. It's an existing wall or even a new wall, it's maybe a new wall, but not a deck that's over the, over the water. So I think wetlands should not be in there. And Dan suggested, why would planning and zoning in ZBA? ZBA would be going if they're looking to expand a building, say, well, once they're expanding a building, it's, it's triggered. So we may not need this whole section here.
And I think the regs as they exist now don't have any of those specific references to
It does, it does have the planning and zoning and Board of Appeals.
Oh, does?
Yeah, it's just not, it's not under applicability, but it's somewhere else, but it is in there.
Paula, just to interject, I'm head of the subcommittee that reviews docks, seawalls, and rafts, and moorings.
Yes.
Steve Harrington and I are on that subcommittee. Our purview basically is the seawall out to the lake. From the inside, the seawall is the inland, in the wetlands commission and whoever else. So we make recommendations to the Board of Selectmen for approval or denial of applications for improvements or rebuilds of walls, repairs or new docks, and rafts and moorings. That's, that's the way we've been doing it. Again, we don't have any standing for approval, but we do make recommendations to the Board of Selectmen for approval of those items.
Right, right. And if, if it's something that needs a building permit, then it comes down through the planning, through the land use department and, and we might pick it up at that point. If it is something that's affecting the surface of the property, but not, not adding a deck or just rebuilding the, the stone wall in the same area. And wetlands may be, be there because somebody has done something on a piece of property that affects wetlands that has nothing to do with surface changes.
That's correct, that's
So they shouldn't, they shouldn't have to, if, if wetlands gets involved, you know, if wetland gets involved because somebody's going to build something, well, we're, that's covered. But if
Yes.
wetlands, because there's a wetlands issue, then they shouldn't be needing to do a spreadsheet and meet the phosphorus levels and all that stuff.
Exactly, exactly.
Those are my, those are my two, two cents on that section.
No, I, I agree, Paula, that's right.
Okay.
I think that, I agree with those thoughts. One minor wordsmithing item, under 21.4.4, under the note at the end.
The note is just me, me writing to you two years ago.
Okay, because when you say existing runoff, I would always want to make sure we describe it as phosphorus runoff.
Right.
Because I wouldn't want runoff in the regulation to be construed to be water runoff.
Right, right, no, I, it, that, that was just a note.
Okay.
So.
Okay. Where I'd like to get to this evening, let's get through the regulations and any comments from Dan, but I definitely don't want to take any or many perspectives as a commission this evening.
No, no, I wouldn't, I wouldn't think so.
That would be premature.
So again, the red is what, what Henry has inserted, and it's, it reads better with, with his changes in here. So just continuing on some, some of his changes. He had quite a few changes in our exception area. The one time, and one of the things that, that Dan, while we're on this topic, do you want to talk about the discussion you had with LMAC on banking and, and multiple changes?
Yep, and just to let you know, we had a kind of abbreviated LMAC meeting. Well, it was a long meeting, but our normal stuff was a little abbreviated. We started off with an hour-long Zoom. We joined a presentation on some lake type stuff that someone else is doing. And then we actually had a hiccup with our minutes from the previous meeting, so we couldn't take any official actions on anything, this particular meeting anyways. I basically gave them a quick rundown about what we had talked about at the last P&amp;Z meeting. Fill them in that this was, was back on the table again, refreshed everybody's memory. Told them that two ideas that were being kicked around were the, was the the banking of surface improvements. And that's something we had actually discussed back then as well. Everyone, generally speaking, was in favor of some type of banking of improvements, like we talked about before. And then I told them, you know, maybe the idea of our one-time, small, impervious area with 100% mitigation concept, the idea was floated to maybe able to do that more than one time. Just the concept, not how many times, not how often or anything like that. And I think the general feeling was that, that was not a good idea, just because they didn't want a cumulative effect over the, over the years.
Okay, anything else?
That's pretty much it, I told them that, you know, this was ongoing here, that I would be, you know, be at this meeting and at our next LMAC meeting, I'll have a much more detailed discussion. And I'll, and I'll pass around these revised regs for them to draft reg to look at, for them to look at. Paul and I are discussing a few other things on there as well that we're going to try and iron out. And so next time we'll have a, a more in-depth discussion at LMAC.
Thank you, you know, when it comes to lake issues, like the nutrient allocation plan initially, even though it was a zoning action, it was really a product of LMAC.
Those guys did a great job, how long ago was that, 30 years ago?
Oh, three. 2000.
Yeah, right, I mean, the lake plan itself.
There was a lot of study that went on for a long time.
Starting in the eighties.
I know these were first adopted in, in 03. So.
Okay, it seems like longer ago, but it's, it's already had a beneficial effect on the lake.
And it, from just overhearing either John or Connie talk to people when they need to do this, I've not heard anybody say, why do I have to do this, this is outrageous. They're all like, oh, the lake is beautiful, this will help the lake. It's, 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 it's interesting because usually people are against something like this. But they, they value the lake.
Yes, very part of the lake.
So Henry made a lot of editing changes in here, which we don't need to go through. But one of the things I did want to talk about, when we were developing this, I was pretty much working with, with John, some with, with Dan. Dan was, I pulled him in a little bit late, would probably have been easier if I'd had him in earlier, but I didn't. But the, and with Connie, who's been administering it, the zoning agent. In the self-mitigation, one of the things that, that John was suggesting is if we had the requirement as, yes, you can do this one time. And you have to do it at least be able to handle a two-inch of rainfall, which is more than what we asked for in other areas of the regulation. And John's feeling was they're just doing it once, it'll catch that building. We were, the example that we were always using around the table was a shed. That they put, you know, a, I think it was 18-inch wide trench with two inches, be able to, to treat two inches of rainwater.
I'd leave the specifics to the, our, you know, our staff to establish.
Okay.
You know, the specifics, I, I just want targets. I, I don't know how everyone else feels.
I, I just wanted to point out that Henry was, thought it, it should be one inch, which that is what we've done in the past. But, but our expert, our resident expert had felt that two inches was more appropriate.
Yeah, getting, getting to about what Rick was talking about, it does specifically say 12 inches by 18 inches, but maybe there should be a comment in there that says it may vary or something like that.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, I don't want to get locked in or constrained or even mandate an unnecessary item. I'd rather have a, a target for what we want to accomplish. And then, you know, if we have to, have to separately approve, you know, what the working regulations are. The only concern I have, and I'm going to go to a different area. Prior to, we, we had a, a town zoning enforcement agent that would constantly insist that people in the watershed do mulch beds as opposed to other methods of, she was very specific about what she, what she wanted to meet the, the, the best management practices. And I, I would rather leave that to a homeowner to come up with. I just want something empirical that they can meet as, as a goal.
And that's, that's the way it is, is handled now, and the spreadsheet is far more user-friendly at this point, where you can, and next, at our next meeting, we can, I'll put it up on the screen and we can, I'll show you. But once you find that you need to change your surfaces, there's a portion of the spreadsheet that you say, well, if I took 1,000 square feet of this, of lawn and made it mulch bed, what would that do? Oh, that's not enough, I need 2,000. So you can play around with it. And with different alternatives, I think there's six or seven different, actually, there's more alternatives because it's lawn to woodland or lawn to this, or putting in a BMP to, a dry well to, to handle the, you know, roof runoff. So the homeowner can figure it out a little bit better than they could have in the past. And I, and I know who you're speaking of, and I'm not sure why it was done that way, but.
I'd like to go back, if I could, to one, one of the comments that you made, Dan, about the LMAC having the perspective that they would rather limit it to a one, one-time allowance for the small changes. Yeah, could you just explain the perspective on that? Because I don't have that same perspective, and I'll explain how I feel about it. But I really want to know in detail who, who felt what way, not, not the individual names, but just give me, just give me a better feel for that.
Well, the point, as I understand it, the point of the whole nutrient allocation plan is to make sure we don't add more phosphorus to the lake based on changes to properties. There's a target value that would be the best for the lake for each individual parcel based on their size and surface area. And there's a lot of those parcels that are already in excess of what that target is for the health of the lake. So, but the recognition is that we, you can't put the burden on a, on a homeowner to bring a property all the way down phosphorus-wise, so what's best for the lake. So what was established at the beginning was that a, at least a 10% reduction would get everybody incrementally closer. And so that process is put in place. But it can be a lot of work, it can be expensive, it can be, you might have to hire an engineer to work with you to figure something out. And the recognition was that for, for small changes, that maybe that was too onerous. So they said, alright, well, let's allow for those types of things without having to go through the process, without having to make your property 10% bigger. So you might want to go put a little shed in, and then all of a sudden, you've got to count for, I don't know, say, say four sheds worth of phosphorus, just because to get that 10% reduction, and that seemed like too much. So as long as you could leave your property as it is, phosphorus-wise, then you could have that small addition. But if you say you build a shed one year and then the next year you expand the patio and the next year you put a, you know, a roof over your front steps or something like that, now you've gotten into a more, you know, larger increase in the amount of phosphorus. And you, and you may be mitigating it each time you go to hold yourself level, but you, the lake never gets the benefit of the 10% improvement to that property.
So conceptually, I, I remember when we enacted the regulations, the idea was to give people who were doing a major redo of their property, an incentive to at least reduce by 10%. were doing a major redo of their property, an incentive to at least reduce by ten percent the amount of phosphorus currently flowing off the property. But I think the idea with the incremental improvements are people like to make changes to their property on a not ongoing basis. So how do we let them do small changes without those small changes being cumulative large changes? So if it was a large change, they'd have to go back to the nutrient allocation plan. And if they were to make multiple small changes to a property and come up with a plan to add ten feet of ten by ten of patio, then ten more, another ten by ten, then ten by ten. And all of a sudden, there's six hundred more square feet of patio adjacent to the lake. Well, the and I get the idea that a one time thing would preclude that, but on the same and we don't want to enable a large expansion of the property that would be negatively impact the lake. But if we allow these smaller improvements once every two years or three years, for example, and that just popped into my head, and I don't know that that would bear analysis. And each time, there can be absolutely no increase in the nutrient runoff based on a cursory incremental analysis that was not formalized. I think we can say that the big, big things are going to be able to be accomplished with with a reduction and then some time spaced, small, small improvements, not one time, but multiple. You want to add add a stoop in front of some stairs, a door, or, you know, I there's multiple small things that people want to do. They want to put a put a pad out for a generator or something like that. The ability to make those changes as they need to without it being burdensome. But on the same token, maybe they do have to space them out if they're going to get a they're not getting a free pass. They're just going to have to one hundred percent mitigate what they're doing.
Yeah, I understand that. That's, you know, it's not, I'm not saying that the committee as a whole said, no, they're we're not interested in that at all. It was the initial knee jerk reaction was like, geez, you know, we kind of kind of thought we were doing something helpful with this one time thing. So I don't think they're adverse to discussing it or exploring that at all. It kind of fits into the the banking as well. So I mean, for instance, if you let's say you do a project now where you need to do a ten percent reduction. Five years from now, you might do another project, and then you'd have to do another ten percent reduction. Now all of a sudden, you've done twenty percent on a property. And is that right? You know?
And well, especially if somebody came in and did a fifteen percent reduction because they're trying to be environmentally conscious. Do we want to penalize them if there's no way to get past that fifteen percent at some point in the future? And that's really the the mind the mindset I have, at least. And I don't think that the rest of the commission differs in that respect. We're trying to say, look, if you've done pretty much everything you can in the first go around, how do we let you reasonably use your property on an ongoing basis? So I don't know that we have an answer to that this evening. I just wanted to get those words out to everybody.
Yeah, yep. And like I said, LMAC is more than happy to think about those things. I'll have some
Well, we don't want to take any action until we I'm pretty much, you know, it's going to be in unison with LMAC and hopefully reach a consensus with you about what the best approach here is. Not that that we formally have to do that, but I that's just the way we want to approach this. At least I'm speaking for myself. I don't mean to speak for anyone else, but, you know, we just value the input from LMAC so much that we I hope you look at us as partners in this process.
Yeah, absolutely. We're advisory committee, so we'll come up with our best advice and let people.
So let's digest these changes as they're presented tonight in the them. And then let's further the discussion to the next meeting if everyone's good. Is there anything else anyone would like to bring up? Paula, you want to take down the the document so we can I can see everyone's face? Hello, everybody.
Yeah, welcome back.
Are you all on the same page as I am with what I said to Dan? Does everyone have the same perspective? And if there's any other ideas, I want to bring them forth now.
I think one of the one of the concerns, I'm on LMAC as well as Dan, and one of the concerns we did have is developmental creep. Everyone buys a piece of property. They want to expand. You know, they want to creep. They want to make it bigger. They want to make it bigger. And that's happened even in the sixteen years that I've lived on the lake. I mean, you know, the the two thousand square foot house now becomes the three thousand square foot house or the forty five hundred square foot house. Everyone is maxing out the development on each piece of property because, you know, the the piece of property is worth a lot of money. So you want to max out the the physical attributes of the property. The last thing we wanted to do is to make it look you know, like something on the shore, like Connecticut shore, where, you know, each house is fifteen feet apart from the other house. This is not the nature of Columbia. So I think that's what LMAC was trying to address. And by doing by by doing the nutrient allocation plan and by trying to limit to some extent that this incremental creep that we do find on the lake.
Understood. I think we've we've worked hard and and always paid attention to that as a planning and zoning commission. You know, the the very careful not to let the spacing between properties get too narrow. That's really.
Yeah, the thing, the thing that comes to my mind is the worst example is is Groton Long Point. I don't know if people are familiar with that, but that is like
I think everyone is.
That is the worst, in my mind, that is the worst possible development on a waterfront piece of property. It's just unbelievable what they've done down there and allowed to be done. It's just incredible.
And part of that was because they allowed sewers.
Yeah, now they have year round, year round residents. Yeah.
Yeah. So once they start, when, once they put the sewers in the city water in.
Yep.
It was crazy.
Exactly.
Although it's a nice place to live.
I'm not sure. I want to look out my house and see another house fifteen feet away.
If you're looking out the front of the water, it's beautiful. I've been in some of the houses down there and it's gorgeous sitting, looking out.
That's only that's only one direction. Look out the side.
I agree. I agree.
No, I agree.
And try to park and try to park your car down there.
Hey, I'm I live in a rear lot and I look at all you people on the lake and say you're too close.
You do, Rich.
Yep, thank you. Okay, anything else anyone wants to bring up about this this evening?
Oh, I'm good.
Paula, thank you. Dan, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Okay, so we're not going to really get into any possible changes other than having reviewed the input that we've gotten. And we'll we'll continue this to our next meeting. Part next item is communications and reports. Paula, anything?
Nothing.
Good, everybody.
Okay, thank you, Dan. I really next item, open discussion, commission, open discussion, anything anyone would like to bring up?
Hopefully, this is the last meeting of the year. We'll see you all next year.
Yeah, I don't see us having another meeting this year unless we have to. So.
The best folks were the bus folks were saying, well, maybe maybe when is your next meeting? He said, I think we can get it done for tonight. Let's get it. This was last a couple of weeks ago.
They did a nice job with what they presented. Audience of citizens, anything from anybody? That's it. I'm going to make a motion to adjourn, but before we vote on it, I'd like to say happy holidays to everybody. And I hope, you know, stay safe. And, you know, it's it's a year from now, we'll be having a happy holiday celebration with our families.
Thanks, guys.
Please be safe, everybody. I need a second to that.
I was just going to say EJ is not here.
Bob, all those in favor? Aye, that's unanimous vote. Flo, thank you.
Thanks.
Happy holidays. Paula, thank you to all of you. I really appreciate everybody. Thank you.
Everybody, see everybody next year.
Happy year next year. Next year will be better.
Next year will be better. Thanks again.